Well, I want to like to call you by the order and of the regular agenda meeting of the board's selectmen for Monday, November 18th. Please all stand for the question. Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
I was getting my chocolate fix.
I, well, I should ask myself. I've been eating.
And a cup.
So I'm eating your cookie. All right, well, I want to welcome everybody. I have item number three. I'm going to actually defer today. We just had a meeting last week, so I feel like this is kind of a repeat in some way. So I'm going to defer my first selectman's update for today and ask for any word comments or liaison.
Just here.
Yeah, that's right.
I have one. Board of Education.
Oh, yes.
I do have one. So the NESNC is our accreditation board at the high school this week that's happening. They met with the Board of Ed last night and are meeting with teachers over the next two days. They are confident that this process in the high school is well-prepared for further the visit. They celebrated the veterans last week and with record attendance, veterans attending the event, it was a great experience for all. School construction in Margaret Town is going very well and the board's facility committee toured the school last week and was very impressed. End of report.
Great. Any other selectman comments or board liaison?
I feel like I have to give an academy building report.
Okay, yeah.
The bid packages are out in the hands of the contractors and the contractors who wish to bid on the project will be submitting their bids by Tuesday, December 10th. So that's a key date for the academy building committee. They'll actually have the bid packages back in hand and will be bringing that information to the public and to the board of selectmen soon thereafter.
Okay, great. I understand they had a nice turnout, at least for the pre-meeting or, you know, what site does it, so.
Something like 15 organizations, the sidewalk, so it's a good sign.
Okay, item number five is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens who'd like to make public comment? Okay, please, we'll do in the room and then I'll look online and please just state your name and address for the record and stand up.
I'm Mike Doras, 49 Hunter's Trail. I'm the senior vice commander of the PFW. And I'd just like to make a couple of statements about the funding that was tabled at the last finance meeting due to the fact that Christine Cohen and John Michael Bacher had put in great effort to get the state to give us funding for the effort. But while they gave us the funding, it's probably going to take us months, if not a year, based on all the paperwork that's available, to get any of that money. And what I'd like to say is if the money that was set aside is still available, if we could get it now, we could start the window project, which it was four, and get it put in. If that alone would save us money again from the year from heating things because they're 50-year-old windows in that building. The other thing is, I know the money goes out at the end of the year, at least I've been told that, and if it's not used for anything else, I don't know of a better organization in this community than Post 2096 that has done as much for the country than any of the members that we have now. So I'd like, if it's available, of course, if you tell me it's not, I know that, but if it's still available, I'd like it to be reconsidered and see if we can get that money to start the window project.
Okay, thank you very much for your comment. And maybe you can offline have a conversation more about the staff. Any other public comments? No, great. Oh, yes, please.
I know it's on the agenda, so I'm not sure if it's appropriate to make a comment now, but I'm Jessica Joseph, 129 Green Hill Road, and just coming to the meeting for support of sidewalks around the schools, specifically the high school, Poston and Neck River.
Great, thank you. Any other party want to share a comment? No? Okay. Any hands raised online, we'll see. And there is an opportunity at the end of the meeting too, so. There is. Okay, Fran?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hey, just hi, I'm just following up on our meeting of three weeks ago where I presented the tree ordinance proposal. I know you can't answer this question, but I'm putting it out there. I'm hoping that within the next three or four weeks, we will have a response from the board as to what the next steps are. Thank you.
Fran, just quick, name and address for the people in the room.
Fran Brady, 108 Genesee Lane, North Madison.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. And we do intend to have a follow-up discussion at a board meeting in December on the tree. So, all right, no further public comments, then we'll move on to item number six. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any comments or questions?
I would like to propose that we table items.
You gotta vote on the consent. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, sorry, I thought it was in the consent agenda, apologies.
No, it was not. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, now go ahead. Item number seven. Let's see the proclamation, yeah?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a proclamation recognizing Daniel Hand High School as a blue-ribbon school.
Blue, second.
Okay, and basically, just want to highlight, the board's selectmen is acknowledging an incredible achievement that Daniel Hand was received recently as a blue ribbon school. It was the only high school in the state of Connecticut to receive that commendation. And they recently went to Washington. We talked about this at our last meeting, I know, and there's a long proclamation that we've issued that we're going to give to the school. We're actually going to present it to them at their meeting, I forget the date, December 10th. December 10th, so there's going to be a recognition ceremony and then we'll formally present the proclamation. I think it's available online, do we need to, we'll put it online rather than read the whole thing, or do you want me to read the whole thing? No? I didn't know if some members of public, they'll be posted on the website and then you can see it when we formally present it to the board. Any comments by board members for the proclamation?
No, just congratulations again, I mean, what an incredible accomplishment.
It's, it's great. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, all right, so excited to be able to hand that over in December to the team. Okay, item number eight.
So I'm going to propose that item eight and item number nine, we table just based on the, that the materials were posted this morning for public view. I got a couple of comments from people online asking for a little more time to review them and folks here may have, may or may not have seen the materials. This is related to the proposed ordinances that we discussed in our public hearing three months ago. So I would ask that we just table those two items for the next meeting so that folks have time to read it.
And I would highlight, if there's additional comments, you can just email the board those comments and then we'll put them on the next agenda for changes or purple.
And that is bls@madisonct.org.
So I'll second the motion to table.
Do we, do we vote to table? I thought we just tabled.
We did motion table.
Oh, we did motion, okay. All right, all right, all in favor of tabling items number eight and nine, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, so those items will come back on the agenda for December and there's no, I don't think we really got, we draw out of the public hearing, but at least we'll give opportunity for some people to read it and send us a comment. Item number 10 is discuss and take action to adopt a resolution abolishing the Aviation Commission, Chester 2, Article 3, Division 2. Need a motion?
So move.
Oh, second. Okay, so this was just uncovered as a, in our ordinance book, as kind of, we used to have an airport in Madison and that was our Salt Meadow Park. But with the fact that the airport is no longer in existence and the committee has not been seated in at least a decade, we thought we should just kind of clean, clean house and get it out of our ordinance. One of the things we're doing is we do all these ordinances, we have to print the ordinance books and we have to re-letter everything. So we figured, let's take this out and then when we re-number everything, you don't have this kind of commission that's not really valid. So I don't know.
You see, yeah, the flying cars are coming. They might want to just leave it as a place.
Any, Al, you were here probably when there was still an airport, right? So you saw the.
I don't think the, I don't think the Aviation Commission has been through decades.
Yes, okay.
It's time to retire.
Okay, all right, and we can always bring one back, Bruce, if it becomes appropriate with new technology.
You heard it here.
So with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item 10 passes. Okay, item number 11 is discuss possible update to Madison's leash law. And so I want to invite up our, our, what is, Officer Amidola, who's our animal control officer, and looks like Chief Drama's on as well, to just discuss this concept and then we would come back with actual kind of verbiage. Oh, you're, I'm here, I'm sorry, I was looking for you online. You could please stand up and, and just talk a little bit about what suggestions you would like us to do to the ordinance.
So I suggested that we update our leash law. Towns have ordinances, actually, our town lines regarding leashes. With the, the existence now of electric leashes, that I've had lots of questions, probably in the last two or three years, people want to know, is, does that suffice as what we call a leash in our ordinance? So if you're not familiar, an electric leash is, it's basically electric correction collar on the dog, the handler has the control and they can administer an audible correction or a shock correction depending upon what state of training they're in with their dog. And they've adopted sort of this term, electric leash. I personally don't think it's a good idea. I think we just need to update saying exactly what a leash is, a physical leash, which should, I think also, in addition to that, say it has to be held by the owner or keeper when the dog is off property. I have encountered, not many, many times, but there has been times where people will walk their dog, the dog will have a leash on it, it'll be dragging the leash and they'll say, it's on leash and it's walking next to me. But it really should be, I think it would be wise to just have a little more of a definition as to what leash we're talking about in the ordinance and the actual holding of the leash.
Okay. So I don't know if you have any questions, I mean, it seems like a sensible change.
Yeah.
Have you gotten pushback from people stating that they, what they had was a leash or you're just concerned it might not?
People like their electric leashes, people are using them, I just think it's safe, safer for other dogs and people in the area. You know, batteries die in these things and there's nothing safer than just having your dog in your hand on your leash when you're out walking off your property.
I think too, for those that might be afraid of dogs, it's more of just a deterrent too, it's a, you know, maybe kind of makes them feel a little bit safer because of that.
Right, it's a little peace of mind when you see somebody walk, you have a fear of dogs and you're, have a big dog coming towards you to see that the handler has the dog actually on a physical leash, not what could be, what could look like the dog is loose.
Do we need to include retractable leash in this as well?
So retractable leashes, I mean, that is technically a leash. Personally, I'm not fond of them, they are, it's a cord, I don't know if you've seen them, they're, it's a cord that is controlled the length by a sort of thumb mechanism on it. The cord is attached to a spool on the inside, which can break. Those cords are really dangerous if the dogs get into it, two dogs get into it and they get around somebody's legs, they will, they will definitely cause some damage as far as the, I don't, I don't think we could really specify that you can't use a retractable leash, they're sold everywhere and people love them, some people love them.
Provided that they stay within the, what is it, 10 foot, right?
Yeah, and you know, I'm not a fan of them personally. It's hard sometimes, some people will go to stop the dog, but they'll forget which way the mechanism moves to stop the dog and they'll actually release more line, so they're, you know, they're not ideal, but I think that they would probably fall within a physical leash description.
So why don't we get some language proposed and we can look at it and then have a process ready?
Yeah, so the process would be, we'd bring, I'd bring a draft back with language and then we would then send it to public caring once we're comfortable with language, have it prepared like we did today, and then we would adopt it. Okay, so we'll thank you for that and I think we'll plan on doing that in another meeting, you know, December might be, probably January, I'm just thinking in terms of some of the topics that we haven't changed, February for December. So we'll reach out and, and run all that by you. And I know the chief is on as well, so he would be included on any of those changes to the ordinance, so.
The only note that I would add in is now that we have a, a town dog park and the ordinance talks about quasi-public, and we might accept.
That's a good point.
We might accept the dog park as, as a requirement for being on leash, because presumably the dogs aren't required to be on leash inside of the dog park.
No, they're not, but it's technically.
But it's, but it's quasi-publicly it, so we just want to accept.
Yeah, create an exception for, of, 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 yeah, so that's a good point, we'll add some language in there to make sure that that is an exception to the leash ordinance, so. Okay, all right, I think that's great, we'll do that and we'll come back probably in January with the, with the, okay? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, great. Item number 12 is an update on town infrastructure projects by our town engineer, Rob Russo. And I wanted, it's included in the packet of list and I just thought it was an opportunity tonight to talk about, we have a lot of things going on in town, and to review kind of the status. I know I get questions a lot from board members or the public, like where are we on this, where are we, you know, because, and there's a long lead time on infrastructure projects, so even though you might get a grant announced last year, it takes time to kind of usher that through the process before you actually see construction happen. So Rob, if you wanted to spend a few minutes going through your list and updating the board, maybe you could share that with the public, genie, is that something you can do?
Yep.
While he's talking, or, I don't know, Rob, is it easier for you to do it?
I can do it, yes. Just want to make sure I don't close out my, my Zoom screen here. Hang on one second.
Office, Rob? Do you want to join us here?
Sure. Yeah, no, it's usually easier to just go over, like, if I have the opportunity to present something like this on here, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, yeah, okay.
Okay, cool, yeah, so good evening, everybody. It's like, like Peggy mentioned, I'm just going to go through, we have a lot going on here and I thought the easiest way to do this was to break this down into sort of phases of things where I like to classify them as in construction, in design and planned. So, you know, it's been a buildup the past couple of years with getting a lot of these different types of grants and Peggy's done a great job kind of spearheading these initiatives and getting these grants and it's been a lot of work getting them, we've had a lot of people internally here work on these documents, either on conceptual plans or, excuse me, either on conceptual plans or these grant applications. So, you know, the, the fruits of that labor finally come into fruition here with, you know, a large portion of them. So basically, in construction here, we're just on to wrap up the pedestrian improvement project, which I know is, has been highly visible, especially the portion on Durham Road slash State Route 79. But that project entailed Woodland Road, pedestrian improvements, sidewalk on Woodland Road, Durham Road and Bradley, a small piece on Bradley Road. We're about 95% done on this one, it's just some punch list items, some of the grass didn't take in some of the areas, so we have to do some additional, you know, seeding and topsoiling probably in the spring to kind of close that out. Basically, and also we had some money left over in the grant, so we have the opportunity to provide some additional sidewalk that was outside of our original scope of work, which is good news, so I think they're going to be coming back maybe even as early as this week to, to add some additional sidewalk on Bradley Road and potentially some down Academy Street, which would be cool. I don't think we have enough money to get all the way down Academy to the actual Academy School, but we're going to see how far we can stretch, you know, every dollar of the grant funding we have allotted. So that's exciting project, that's finally sort of coming to, to a conclusion. Another project we have in construction right now is the Flitlock Bridge, Flitlock Road Bridge Rehabilitation. This is funded under the state local bridge program, it's a 50/50 split between the town and the state of Connecticut. Right now, the project's in construction, they've been out there constructing the bypass pipes from the upstream side to the downstream side. The proposed completion date for this project is sometime in the January, in January, weather permitting, but they've been starting to pick up steam on that and, you know, keep the schedule that was proposed prior to the project entering construction. Another, another big ticket project that's, you know, well-known is the Madison Downtown Center Utility Project. Great news for everyone here, I know this has, you know, been, been talked about pretty frequently, but the good news is on December 2nd, we're going to be cutting over our final three services downtown and then hopefully that same week, the, the remaining two poles will be coming down as well. So, you know, we've been a little bit of a standstill, standstill waiting for some equipment to come in, but finally, that project will be coming to a close, you know, coming to December, Christmas 2025 is going to come a few weeks early and we'll have that one completed that first week in December. Also, and I'm sorry, I'm rattling on here, if anyone has any questions, I guess at the end, if anyone has any questions, but next big, another great project, you know, this is going to be exciting for the summer of 2020, summer of 2025, and again, I've come into this sort of at the, the construction phase of the project and Austin and Johnny and Akko have done a good job, great job getting this off the ground, but there's the Garvin Point improvements. Basically, they're finally, they're going to be mobilizing this week, starting to bring in some sheet piles, so you'll see some activity down at the Surf Club. Yeah, yeah, this is just, I guess I'll leave this list of projects, so, yeah, but you'll start seeing some activity down there, some sheet piling, right now, we've been, the, the contractor's been putting together a lot of different submittals for the project and our engineer's done a great job as SLR Consulting of keeping up with those submittals and approving them as they come in, so there won't be any delays and, or, and, you know, minimize lead time on some of the materials needed. So the good news is that'll be in construction, hopefully this week or early next week, depending on mobilization. So that pretty much wraps up everything we had, we have currently in construction, which, you know, it's, it seems, it, four projects is a lot, but when you, you know, go into all the minutia of each of these, you know, they all have their independent challenges, which, you know, we've been able to overcome and to me, I, I think they're going to be pretty, pretty successful projects. The next phase of this, I like to call this in design, we have the Madison Downtown Center Project Phase 3, we contracted SLR Consulting as well to complete the, the last third of the downtown center, so basically from the Madison Firehouse and on the north side and Henny Penny on the south side, and we're going to be kind of picking up that project again with three, with two state grants, actually, we have a steep, steep grant and also a TOD grant that are going to be, that'll be funding this project. With that project, again, it's a continuation of pretty much what's out there, you know, the decorative streetlights, landscaping, brickpaver sidewalks, extending the median, we're going to kind of take a fresh look at the traffic down there, how those lanes are configured, and also kind of a fresh look at the Tuxus Pond Walkway Entrance there. But the good news is that's in preliminary design now, we should be getting some, some preliminary design plans within the next couple of weeks, so that's, that, looking forward to seeing what those plans look like. Another project we have, and this is kind of, these Flitlock and Garnet Park Bridge kind of go hand in hand, they're both under the state local bridge program, so Garnet Park will be a 50/50 split between the town and the, the state of Connecticut. Garnet Park is on a little bit different of a timeline because of, it's a, it's a much more challenging bridge design, as many of you know, there's only one way in and one mean, one mean, one means of ingress and egress out of that area, so the, the phasing of the construction as well as the, as well as the, the phase that we're at right now is the permitting process through deep, CT deep and Army Corps, so that's really what our consultant, Barton and Judas, is preparing for now, is there submittals to both of those agencies to get for, for permitting for that bridge. It's anticipating that hopefully sometime in, I can't give an exact timeline, but hopefully in 2025, mid, mid, probably mid to late 2025, we'll get that, that project in, in construction. Another, next project we have here is Cops Road and Warpus Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project. This is funded through the state of Connecticut's Lotsit Program, local, local transportation improvement program. Basically, this is fully funded, 100% is funded by the state, we're going to be doing pavement rehabilitation throughout this corridor, so basically Cops Road from Green Hill Road to Warpus and then Warpus north all the way to the Route 79 intersection. And again, we're going to be rehabilitating the roadway pavement, potentially reconstructing some areas, adding drainage throughout the corridor as well as, as well as providing some pedestrian improvements on the, excuse me, on the, the Cops Road section. So we're going to have sprinkle in some pedestrian improvements as well as pavement rehabilitation and storm drainage improvements, you know, this will be, this is going to be a pretty, pretty exciting project, especially considering, you know, John's done a terrific job of getting all our collector roads in town paved over the past number of, number of years. This is, will be, Warpus will be our last collector road that we need to, to get paved, so this will kind of close that circuit and will be more of a, in, in maintenance mode on those collector roads considering they see so much average daily traffic, at least relative to, to Madison. Next project we have here, and this is a great project, just spearheaded by the chief, the Boston Post Road, US Route 1 pedestrian connectivity and safety improvements, this, this project kind of morphed from providing pedestrian, safe pedestrian crosswalks at three locations throughout the, the Route 1 corridor in Madison. One is at the West Wharf, Lantern Hill intersection with Boston Post Road, one is at Boston Post Road and Dudley Lane and one is at Boston Post Road and Cottage. You know, because we have the ability to, to, to get lots of funding and this would be an eligible project, we thought, you know, how could we, how could we provide some additional connectivity to these crosswalks? So with this project, we're going to be looking to add sidewalk along West Wharf from that Lantern Hill, West Wharf, Boston Post Road intersection down along the west side of the golf course connecting to Surf Club Road. You know, we could speak more and, and I guess at another time, but that was, this project connecting downtown to the Surf Club is, I, I think in most people's opinions, but in, in my personal opinion, an important connection for this town to have concerning there's so many pedestrians, including kids, walking between downtown and Surf Club and, you know, the, the Route 1 section is certainly going to provide challenges, but with the study we had by BL Companies done about a year ago, it turns out the West Wharf section is the, the least complicated, so we're kind of picking off some low-hanging fruit here and the fact that this will qualify for lots of funding and also provide connectivity to the, the crosswalk that we're proposing, it just kind of makes sense to, 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 for the, in a holistic sense, to, to, to complete this project in this kind of phase, in this kind of phasing. Also, we're going to be providing some additional sidewalk at the Dudley Lane, at the Dudley Road, but yeah, Dudley Lane intersection from the, the auxiliary lot slash Shoreline Greenway Trail, Hammond Asset Lot over, across from Lenny and Joe's over there, we're going to provide sidewalk along Boston Post Road to this crosswalk across the street to Lenny and Joe's and then to the Lenny and Joe's sort of driveway entrance. So now you could, you could have ADA accessibility now, a lot of pedestrians walk that now, but now this, this way we'll have a dedicated actual sidewalk that'll also provide pedestrian, I mean ADA accessibility. But now this, this way we'll have a dedicated actual sidewalk that'll also provide pedestrian, uh, I mean ADA accessibility from this parking lot, from the, the paved Shoreline Greenway Trail portion from Hammond Asset Park for, um, and provide sidewalk and safe access uh, across the street to Lenny and Joe's or, uh, any of the other, uh, Dunkin' Donuts or I guess it's the Middlesex Healthcare, whatever other businesses are over there. We're going to provide safe pedestrian access. So that's a, it's a project that, uh, again is, is, is in design, hoping to get the Lotsip application into, uh, the South Central Regional Council of Governments in the, um, in the next few weeks. Uh, another big project here, and again, I think anyone who's either lives in these areas, walks in these areas has been in town a number of years, understands that the Middle Beach Road, Island Avenue, uh, Middle Beach Road West, that area is prone to flooding, especially in high precipitation events. Uh, you know, it's tidal. So, uh, SLR Consulting is right now is performing a flood mitigation study is kind of a first step. Um, they've done a great job reaching out to the public. They provided us with a letter that we sent out to the public and it's been yielding great data. Um, I sent this, this letter out a few weeks ago and they've already been, a lot of residents have been emailing the engineers stating, hey, we have flooding in this area in my backyard. Um, this is what we're seeing out there. It's a really, it's really a great boots on the ground type of approach. Outside of them, them being out there surveying and collecting data, uh, getting all the, all this information from residents out there. Um, you know, will only sort of cultivate the study further. Um, so I, that's right now is currently where there, that's more in like the data collection phase. They haven't really started studying anything, haven't really done any hydraulic modeling just yet. They're, right now they're in the data collection, but if there are any citizens or residents down there who are watching, please feel free to reach out to me or our engineer. Um, to, uh, if they have any other information, because any, all the information we can gather down there and all the data, data collection we could get, the, the more efficient, you know, they can work and the better our study will be when we could actually provide construction alternatives to how to mitigate um, you know, the flooding that goes on in that area. Um, okay. So the last, the last project we have planned and you know, it's, it's just about to move in the in design should be coming back to the board here in the next couple of weeks is the Scotland Avenue Roadway Improvements. I know we just met, um, that had the granted, uh, the grant announcement about a week ago. Um, we have a proposal from, um, Stantec and, um, and, uh, at a New Haven, uh, they worked on, they helped us with the, um, you know, with the cost estimating, uh, a, a concept plan that John and I had put together. Uh, they were, helped us out with the estimate and now they provided a proposal for engineering services um, to design sidewalks, roadway improvements and, uh, you, um, and I think we're also going to be doing some drainage improvements on Scotland as well. So I'm just in the process of just making sure, kind of buttoning up that, that proposal to make sure um, any type of, uh, permitting, design or everything that's, that's, the, the proposal's all encapsulating to that project. So hopefully by your next meeting, I'll be able to bring that back to the board and you know, we could jump that off the plan list and, and get that into design as well. So that, yeah, there's a lot going on, but it's exciting time because you know, these, a lot of these projects have kind of been sitting for a bit. And, uh, it's exciting to A, get them in construction, um, B, in design and then C, when they're actually in, uh, when they're fully constructed. You know, it's exciting to see people out walking on the sidewalks and getting use of, of all these improvements. So with that, I thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to, to give an update tonight.
So, um, obviously a lot of the projects, um, any specific questions from board members about any of them? It's a lot there. Uh, we'll be talking about one more. Obviously our next agenda item is one that's not officially planned yet, but we have to make a decision about how we're going to move forward with that. It's one that, uh, the team has, um, you know, put some designs together. Um, but, uh, I just want to commend obviously John Anako and yourself for, you know, getting these things to this point and, and continuing to move them along. I think this, the project on Durham Road, the sidewalk project, I just saw a lot of positive feedback from residents that are really enjoying using it and I've seen people on sidewalks all the time. So it's great to see, you know, uh, the public embrace them. Um, and they're getting in, into use, which is great. So and the other thing is you threw a lot, around a lot of terms, but there's different buckets of money for projects and a lot of times we have to kind of spin our project to make sure that we're capturing the right buckets of money. So we talked a lot about Lotsip, which is, um, uh, a fund of money that is really, you go through the region to get. Um, and it, it basically it's, it's state funding. Uh, it's federal dollars through, that are, uh, coming through the state. Um, and, um, the criteria typically is that it has to be related to a collector road, which means a, a road that has more volume on it and is a connecting road. Um, and there's kind of criteria that qualifies for collector roads. We don't have a lot of collector roads in town. So that's why it's kind of hard sometimes to find a project that's going to qualify for that Lotsip funding. The good thing is they're doing a lot of sidewalks now, which they used to not allow you to use lots of money for sidewalks, but now they are. The state is really encouraging, um, the installation of sidewalks. So that's where we decided to go after these crosswalks and sidewalks. Um, uh, using lots of funding. So if we pay for the design fees upfront and get the design done and approved and go through the DOT, uh, approval process, they pay for a hundred percent of the construction. Um, so anyway, so that's kind of a part of the reason we've been able to move a lot of these projects while we're trying to tap that money. The, the, uh, our region, which is the South Central Regional Council of Governments is actually flush with lots of money. We have not been, they have not been good at getting the money out to the towns. They haven't gotten a lot of towns applying for the money. So there's been a big push over the last year. They're worried that if we don't keep, we don't use up what we have been allotted, we won't get more. Uh, so the problem is we're in the same pool as New Haven and Milford and Orange and a lot of these larger communities. So that's why we've had a big effort to really try to get what we can from this while the funding is, is there. Uh, so, um, I don't know if, um, we want to move on to item number thirteen, Rob, if you could stay on for that. Um, and then we also have our, uh, Facilities Director here, Peter Anderson, um, to talk about the, uh, proposed Green Hill, Muggertown Road Sidewalk Project. Um, so let me give you a second because I got a little background. We had a meeting about this over the summer, I think, and we also did a special notice to the, um, neighbors just to get us, to get a feeling from what people thought about, uh, developing a sidewalk uh, along Muggertown Road where the new school is and connecting to Green Hill to the Green Hill Campus, so that you could actually walk on a sidewalk from Neck River Elementary School to Daniel Hand High in Pulsun. Um, and this was, came out of several different things. One was that, um, traffic studies have been conducted. There was a lot of concerns about safety on the roads. Um, and that discussion, I think, it had some takeaways from it. I think, um, we committed to coming back with more information for the public and for the board about why do you want sidewalks? Does it make it safer having a sidewalk on the road? So I tried to pull some information together, addressing that sidewalks do actually increase safety on roads when you add sidewalks. The other questions I think that came up were, you know, who's advocating for the project? And so this, um, in your packet, you'll see a letter from the Board of Education um, as a, as a, uh, uh, advocating that they are supportive of the project. There's also one from our Bicycle Pedestrian, uh, Committee and I hit their chairs here, um, advocating for this project. Um, they actually did conduct a road safety audit that was part of your packet. After, I think the meeting was in, this was conducted after the meeting, I think that we had, just to walk through what the issues are if you do that walk and um, and in it, and then the other thing that kind of, the reason I brought it up tonight is the building committee is now having to make decisions because the plans that were approved by Planning and Zoning include a sidewalk on Muggertown Road in front of the school. So they're going to have to decide, okay, am I going to have to take money from the school building budget to, to implement some sort of sidewalk to meet, you know, what Planning and Zoning require? Or is that going to be handled by this bigger plan? And that bigger plan is going to be funded a hundred percent through Lotsip, uh, because we would apply for Lotsip funding. So the town would have to spend roughly forty, fifty thousand dollars for the final design, I think, to go through to get the final approvals with DOT and then we would apply to Lotsip for the a hundred percent of the construction costs for the project. And the project is well over a million dollars if we were to, you know, so if we're going to pay for it ourselves, you know, that's a big nut, but this would be a hundred percent covered by Lotsip if it gets approved. So they, we kind of need to decide what direction we're going on this. That's why I put it on tonight's agenda. We did have a lot of other big things and I thought we need to let the building committee know, hey, we're moving forward with the grant, so don't you know, spend your money on other priorities or, um, and give them some direction. Um, and we also need to get this moving in terms of the application process. So, um, so I think Peter, if you just want to spend a few minutes.
I want to highlight that, uh, right on, uh, in a minute, but I do want to say also that the sidewalk, if it's done, if, if the school project assumes that, uh, pending the location on that may not be reimbursable. So that would be a hundred percent on us, the, the sidewalk at the school. Um, so what we're looking at here on the map, changing back to the original topic of conversation is the proposed sidewalk plan that Stantec has, has come up with leading from Darrenthal, uh, at the lower left of your page, all the way up to the Pulsun Access Road. That's highlighted by the dark lines that are dashed and dotted going along the entire road of Green Hill Road down Muggertown, down to, uh, Darrenthal. The, uh, five rectangles that you see on the, are five individual plans that are enlarged and, and if you, you have it in your packet, you can scroll through and see how each one of these is going.
And, and this is, this is the one that was presented in this.
That's correct. This is what was.
And we, so we haven't spent any more money to try to, uh, accommodate this. What has happened since then, obviously the water line is now in place, right? So that would have to be built into this plan.
Yes.
And then there was a lot of conversation about the sycamore tree and the idea being that, that would be, there'd be a workaround for that that would keep the tree healthy and alive and, and, um, it would not be requiring removal of the tree.
That's correct.
A lot of people were concerned of. And then I would also like to highlight what, what was interesting to me and Rob, you can maybe point this out. Um, the project that we're doing on Warpus and Cops Road, there is going to be a, a smaller pedestrian sidewalk that's actually going to connect to Green Hill Road and would line up with the end of this sidewalk. So now you got a connection going. Rob, I don't know if you want to just show that for a second. Um, so it really does create, create a nice inner, you know, uh, um, connection between a project that's already moving forward that will include sidewalks, um, and then it would connect to this this new proposed sidewalk on Green Hill.
Yep, um, hang on one second. Bringing this up, okay.
And then we knew that, um, there has also been talk of, you know, as part of a broader plan, we don't try to do these things like as isolated things. We try to have a plan. The connection eventually would perhaps go across the bridge beyond Muggertown Road, crossing the bridge over to connect eventually to Route One. So you have a full network connecting, um, sidewalks. So, um,
So, yes.
There's that little connection there, just so you can see how this is going to move, this would connect into if we did the new sidewalk.
Yep, so, um, you'd be coming down, uh, you'd have all the new sidewalk bringing you to eventually the, uh, uh, going across the Daniel Hand, um, driveway over to the Pulsun driveway and then that's kind of the plan you just saw, kind of terminates there. There is some sidewalk that goes internal to the, uh, the school facilities, but then ultimately it terminates at the Pulsun driveway. And when we did our let, one of our Lotsip projects a number of years back, the Green Hill Road Reconstruction, we installed some sidewalk at the Pulsun driveway and brought it up to this, uh, Green Hill Road and Cops Road intersection. So as part of that Cops Road and Warpus Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project, it's been proposed to that sidewalk that terminates here currently, we would provide a crosswalk, uh, ADA accessible ramps across perpendicular cross to the north of, uh, north of Green, north side of Green Hill Road, come around to the east side of Cops and ultimately we would follow this sidewalk on north along Cops Road, um, continuing along Cops, passing, uh, Cops Hill Trail, past Warpus, just up to the, uh, I think I just missed it, the, the Camp Hadley Trail, which is right here. So we would come up sidewalk, um, improve some of the parking area here where the Camp Hadley Trail is. And it's recent, recently, recently brought to my attention. Uh, I walked, I've hiked Camp Hadley Trail during COVID, but I haven't been out there in a while, but I've, I guess there's some good educational opportunities and some nice trails that are in, in, in this section here. So now you'd be able to connect um, not only the Pulsun and Daniel Hand Schools, but by providing sidewalk to the new, um, the new, the new elementary school. You'd have pedestrian access from the net new school, have an opportunity to walk um, on sidewalks all the way to this, this trail network.
So that, that was just one point I wanted to highlight because I think when we had the conversation, these plans hadn't been finished, you know, and they were finalizing that. And, um, and so I also wanted to invite John, if you want to just talk a few minutes, because you, you've conducted the road safety audit.
Yeah.
And we had a meeting, we, we're getting right now, um, we got proposals for our bike pa- pedestrian long-term plan, that the town is going to be doing townwide bike pedestrian study and plan. Um, so we, this is another reason we were talking about this two weeks when we were meeting with all these consultants. And we were talking about the fact that like, out of all the sidewalk projects, this was the one that just seemed so, um, uh, important, you know, in terms of because it's connecting to schools. And that's when we got in the conversations about activity. And John pointed out in your packet, you'll see a heat map um, that shows there is a lot of activity as equivalent to the level of activity beaches in terms of, uh, uh, bicycle pedestrian activity. So I don't know if you just want to
Sure.
Talk a little bit about your committee and, and your thoughts on this.
Yeah, so the good, so I'm John Bean, Chair of the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee. Um, so I, I was unable to attend the meeting in June, but, uh, uh, we, we watched it and listened to it and we decided as a group, we really wanted to go out and walk the section. And in, in part of doing that, we invited the Yukon T2, forget the full name, but they're basically professional road safety auditors from the state to join us. And they provided us with recommendations, different changes. Um, so then we, we put up a report based on that. But there, there were several themes in the, in the meeting and, and one of the major ones was whether or not people even use this area. Um, personally, it's, it's a terrifying stretch of road. I avoid it. Um, but I am a runner and a cyclist and a hiker and a dog walker and all those things. And as part of that, I have this activity tracker called Strava. If you're not familiar with it, check it out. There's a free version. You can record anything you're doing, but Strava has a hundred and twenty-five million users. Uh, it's, it's massive. Lots of people here in town use it. And one of the really cool features, if you do like to geek out on the data like I do, is you can pay for the premium and you get access to heat maps. The heat maps, you can look at it at all time, or you can look at by weekly. And you can also filter by user type, so foot traffic, pedestrian traffic, et cetera. Right now it's a great time to use it if you want to go mountain biking and you want to find trails that are packed down. That's basically what I did. So I thought, well, how, how does this area look on the heat maps? So I took a weekly view around the schools and it was pretty significant. It was lit up. Uh, and then I said, well, how does this compare to the downtown area and the beach route area, the, you know, the Madison stretch that everybody walks? Um, and it was, it was on par or better than the whole downtown Wall Street main area. Uh, it was less so than the beach area.
When you say better, more, more traffic.
Yeah, yeah, more, more traffic, more heat. And these, these are maps that are, you know, they're, they're based on the same. So like, if, if you see one area that's red, then you know that's hot. If you, and if you zoom out or zoom in, it stays the same. So you can tell where the high traffic is. Uh, I looked at sections and you can kind of even break it down further if you want to. And I, I was able to see that there's a significant amount of traffic from people walking and or running to get to the town camp or to the main school to go around the track. Because the track is like an inferno. It's like red, red, white traffic. And then there's also connections of people going up into the trails. So I'm guessing, you know, and what I've seen when I drive on that road is you see the kids after school on cross-country running up into the Madison Mall trust. So it's probably some of that. I spoke to people on our, our advisory committee and a lot of them have kids in the schools there. Uh, and they said it's huge for after school as well. All the kids after school are going out and doing that for their sports or whatever. So there was, there's a significant amount of traffic that we, we recognize through that. Um, and the other, the other bit I would recognize too is one of the major one of the major bits that we did in town was we set out a, a major survey in 2019 to see where the town demands were for infrastructure improvements for pedestrian cyclists. And one of the top improved areas that we wanted to see was around the schools. So when we look at this now with the new school, and, and my son is seven right now, he'll be at the new school next year. We often ride the bike three miles. He asked me the other day if he could walk three miles to go to school because he likes taking the route to school and not getting on the bus. So when I look at this network that you were just kind of describing, it's going to make our three-mile route with like maybe half a mile of on-road traffic, which is kind of doable. So this is, it's super exciting. You know, I think, I think the town has adopted a complete streets policy or, or, yeah, I guess it was a policy, it's not an ordinance. And, you know, this, this certainly fits right into that to make sure that we have safe routes, given the, the traffic we can see from Strava and the surveys. And then, you know, it seems like a good candidate for, for a sidewalk. Then when we consider three-quarters of all the Madison Public School children will be there, we have our most vulnerable and important group of population in one area. It really, it seems like a no-brainer to us. We, we made some recommendations in, in the letter that we, we shared about right-of-ways and things to avoid private property, to keep the tree safe. We certainly want the tree to remain where it's at. We don't want anything there. And even an improvement to the strange three-way intersection, the one that has two stop signs. So some of those recommendations would even make that a little bit safer, more traffic calming measures there. So we see it as kind of a no-brainer with those. Hopefully, it comes through.
Also, I just wanted, I don't, I know Jack is also in attendance and, um, you know, he's very familiar, obviously, with the traffic issues in that area. So Jack, I don't know if you want to bring Jack up, if he wants to make a few comments. Put you on the spot, Jack. I didn't realize you were gonna be on. Let's see. Okay. Well, we'll try to get him, but, uh, oh, he's coming. Good. There you go. Sorry.
All right. Without beating this to death, uh, I think, I think John, I think that, uh, uh, Rob has said it best. Listen, this is the margin of opportunity. We've been looking, since the day I walked in this town, I've been trying to improve bicycle safety and most certainly pedestrian safety. I, I maybe I personally envision loops going up towards the school, coming back to downtown, giving people that access. I think that with the grants that are available and the monies you have, this is your margin of opportunity to get it done. You know, probably won't happen in my span here, but I think that you folks should work towards that. Um, we, we go to numerous meetings throughout the years. We come back frustrated because it's either a funding issue or trying to get all, all the ducks in a row and get it so that everybody is on board to do it. Right now, the climate is right for pedestrian bike safety, most certainly for bicycles and motor transportation. Like the gentleman before described it best, it's, it's, it, it's a good family thing. So I would advocate that we look at this seriously, that promote the bicycle safety. I think that the, the walkway between the schools makes sense. And, um, I, I truly support it. Thank you.
Thank you. So that, that's obviously this follow-up that we had from our conversation. Summer, I was trying to pull information to address a lot of the questions, so open it up for a board discussion.
Well, I'll go first.
Yeah, yeah, go for it. Yeah.
So I, I'd offer another interpretation to the heat map as a Strava user that this is, these are the high school kids, the athletes that are tracking their workouts on Strava. And they are leaving, they're originating at the high school, leaving, dispersing from there and coming back. I don't believe that these are neighborhood walkers that are casually recording all of their, their data on Strava. Truly, we don't know. But looking at the hottest part of the map is the parking lot at the high school. That's, that's what I would believe this data is. I, I still, I have, I have proudly supported sidewalk projects where I think they, they're needed and, and they're for the benefit of the community. I continue to not see the benefit here. I do not believe for a moment that the elementary school is going to walk to the Hadley work camp site. I just don't believe it. I don't think they're going to march second, third, fourth, fifth graders that far. They don't do it now. They're gonna put them on a bus and they're gonna move them that way. They can't move large groups of kids on foot like that. I think this sidewalk puts a couple of homeowners in a tough spot. I think it saddles them with an undue burden. The property, the property that's, um, in between the two driveways right now is gonna get hundreds and hundreds of feet of sidewalk that it will be forced to maintain. The property on the corner of Green Hill and Munger Town will get hundreds of feet of sidewalk that it will be responsible for. And if I understand it, these sidewalks are going to be curb adjacent. They're not going to have a buffer. So that means every time a plow goes by and dumps snow on it, the homeowner is going to be responsible for clearing that snow off. Forget the, the, the trees for a second. Forget, um, uh, the ongoing maintenance that these sidewalks will represent for homeowners in, in the downstream years. I, I just think it's an unfair burden for what I don't believe will be a used sidewalk. Now, maybe the high school kids and the middle school kids will use it for running for that particular stretch. I don't think that's a good reason to put it in a sidewalk. I don't believe there's a natural reason for the elementary school kids to walk to the high school or to the middle school. And I don't think there's a natural reason for the older kids to walk to the elementary school. If we really believe that's going to happen, we should be looking at a bridge over the wetlands from the school that completely separates them from the road network. I don't believe they would use that either, but I, I think to, to my mind, that makes more sense. The cost in who pays for it isn't really the point for me. I get that it is substantially free to us. We don't need to talk about how it's really all our money anyways, cut it back to us, that if we don't use it, somebody else is going to use it. We're finding good sidewalk projects and executing on good sidewalk projects in this town. I just don't believe this is one of them.
I like sidewalks, but I would also like to relieve the homeowners of the burden of dealing with the sidewalks. So, um, um, I, I think Bruce has made some good points here. I, uh, maybe naive, but if, if I, I love the opinion, if we build it, they will come. I, I have no idea how we can anticipate how these sidewalks will be used in the future. But, um, um, I think these heat maps are suggestive and I would like to pursue the sidewalks, but only if we figure out how we can help the homeowners deal with the sidewalks.
I agree with what you guys are saying. I love sidewalks too. I also love that my son can ride his bicycle to Brown. But he's doing it through the woods. And I know for a fact that they bus students from Ryerson to Brown down the same driveway that has no cars traveling on it besides school traffic to transport students from point A to point B, whether that's for after-school care or whether that's for, um, the instance of like shadowing when they're getting ready to transition the schools in the past year. So, um, to hang our hat on the schools allowing the students to use the sidewalks during the day and to go to Camp Hadley, they don't even let them walk, I don't know if that's even like a quarter of a mile. They don't even let them walk that far on a very protected roadway. So I don't want to hang our hat on that. I would love it if more kids could ride their bikes to and from school. I just also know that the release procedures for kids in the, at least the K through three are very different than the four through five. So I don't know how that is going to change or if it will change once we have this broader age range in the school. So I think that's something that we need to really have some conversation with, not specifically from the Board of Ed, but from the administration from the schools on what they feel is safe. And what they are going to allow from their perspective. And then to echo the point of both Al and Bruce, I, I can't see moving forward with this unless we definitively say that we are going to relieve those homeowners of, you know, some really serious manpower, um, that it would require snow removal, leaf removal, our current sidewalk regulations say maintenance, even if there's frost heaves or broken sidewalks and that sort of thing, that all falls on the homeowner. So I would want some serious commitment. But I am open to continuing this conversation. I just, I need some more support information from some other entities as well.
So I guess I'm last.
No, I'm last. I need presenting information, but, uh, go ahead.
So I've had kids, uh, as Bruce and Al have, that have, and actually Peggy's in it, that have had kids go through Daniel Hand, Poulsen, et cetera. And, you know, I've been out there at times where I've seen those runners that we're talking about running on a very dangerous road. I've been on that road as a walker. It is very dangerous, as is. I don't think any of us are saying that we shouldn't be using that road as a result of the safety challenges. I mean, we heard, we heard Jack that this is, this is a priority and he supports it. But pushing school kids aside, because I think that's a huge benefit. Listen, I mean, some of you guys came tonight to support this, um, who live in the community. I fully, fully believe that this is a community project that if you look at the heat maps, if you look at, um, the neighborhoods of walkers, strollers, you know, bikers, um, you know, people walking before school, after school, in the evenings. There's a community need there and you may not see the, what do we call this, Strava? I don't have Strava, um, data. But the reality is you've got parents out there, I know quite a few of them who have strollers with babies and want to walk their kid, and they can't because the road isn't, you don't have the ability to do it. So I guess that's, that's a piece that I really do struggle with now. I don't push aside the comments about the neighbors and the, you know, the challenges that this will present. I do think we have seen already some very thoughtful, uh, designs, things that, you know, will, will help address some of those challenges. I think we as a board have the ability to solve the maintenance challenge that we're talking about. And I think that's come up in previous meetings already, that that would be something that we would do. And I think, you know, listen, the, the cost, I know you don't want to talk about it, I mean, anyways, it's free, whether it's state money or not. It's still, it's, it's money that's sitting there to do this, to make our roads safer in our community. Why wouldn't we do it? It seems, who said it? A no-brainer, right? It seems like a no-brainer. So I guess I, I am all in, completely supportive. I think it's the right thing to do for our town, anywhere that we can do it that has high traffic. And this clearly has high traffic.
Yeah.
Just, just one thing about the maintenance. I think as we talk about this idea of, of assuming the maintenance, we want to be mindful that, um, it, it may be problematic to say, this sidewalk we're gonna maintain, your sidewalk we're not gonna maintain. You're on your own for that. So for people who have a sidewalk now, I, I, I don't know how we get around all of that. I, I'm, I'm worried about that. That's it. Sorry.
No, that's okay. So obviously I'm very supportive of this because I think if you can't put a sidewalk connecting two schools in a heavily trafficked neighborhood that has tons of car traffic making it unsafe for pedestrians, where else can you put it? I think you, you know, I, I'm not just even relying on the heat maps. I'm relying on my own experiences driving my kids to school, both at Jeffrey, Poulsen and Brown, and, and Hand. And it's not just during school hours, as you know, it is after-school activities. It's before-after-school kids. It's kids, you know, the high schoolers leave and some live in the neighborhood and they walk home. More might do it, even more, which would cut down on traffic on the road. And I think our goal as a community is to try to change behaviors, right? By making more safe opportunities. And that came out of the strategic plan. People want to be able to walk more places and not rely on cars. So this is a little bit of a behavior change. I think, you know, 50 years ago, it was all about making kids take the bus. A lot of communities now are actually eliminating bus service, at least I know. I don't know if Connecticut allows it, but a lot of other places, if you live within a mile of the school, you do not get driven to school. Just imagine the amount of cost we could save by not having to bus kids. If that were, yeah, exactly. So, you know, I'm just saying, so we have, it's a behavior change that we're going through right now. We need to rethink our behaviors, right? And this is a way to encourage people to do that, I think. And it just, you know, and I recognize the issue with the homeowners. The difference here, and I think there's a way technically we can do it, is it is connecting to municipal facilities. We could, as a board, resolve that we are absorbing this maintenance. We have the equipment. And, you know, that we can do that as a special situation related to that. How we do that technically, I think there'll be some sort of resolution about the ordinance. So I think you have the stars aligning here to the point earlier that there's a, there's a, a safety issue, there's funding available, and the timing is perfect because of the redistricting. Because just think, the, the traffic is going to get worse in this area, I think, because of Munger Town Road. So I feel it's worthy moving forward with a lot of public input on the design process and then in us as a board addressing the ordinance concerns.
I meant to ask you, sorry, I wrote this down and I didn't ask you. Can the Strava app, can they show times of use also? Or is it just the day of?
Not, not yet. So there's a, well, there's, it depends how much money we have. There's a Strava Metro that you can.
Premium plus?
They didn't even respond to my emails. But for Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, I reached out to see what that service was because if Boston wants to do improvements, they will contract out Strava Metro and they'll give them all the details. I talked to somebody and they were like, for a town this size, we've never even done anything. But time would be interesting. You know, they just, they just, like this week flushed out that the heat maps are available on the app. They were only available on the computer. They were only available for all time. So it's one of those things where they try to keep you subscribing, so they always throw new improvements out. But the heat maps, like I said, I use them often, or if I'm in a city. Like I was, I was traveling for work, I was in Atlanta and I wanted to go for a run and I was like, I don't know where to go without getting killed. So I look at the heat maps to see where runners in the area go. And it was, it was a great group.
And did I see, did I read somewhere in here that all of the land that would be used would be town right-of-way? We wouldn't need to coordinate with homeowners?
We need, we, we know we need easements.
Okay.
Can I speak to one of the recommendations, the, the advisory committee? When we walked that with the state, there was a recommendation that they believed that the majority of it was able to move by shifting the curb line to the north. And that would avoid a lot of the easements and it would put it into the town's right-of-way.
So I will, I will speak for one special interest group tonight, and that is bus drivers. The Fire Hydrant on the corner, on the, what is it, the southeast corner? If you look, the grass hasn't grown in. There's already tire marks about five inches away from the Fire Hydrant. That's, that's gonna be a bad day when a UPS driver or a tractor trailer who got turned around because of the Munger Town Bridge makes that corner and with no traffic. That's a tight turn. It's gonna be a bad day when that Fire Hydrant goes over. And it's already about that far away from it. So moving the curb north makes that corner tighter and, and less traversable. Imagine that news story. Bruce hits it. It won't be me. It won't be me that you know about.
So moving, moving the southern curb line out to the north, you're saying? I just want to be sure I'm understanding.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I think, well, I would just say any, you know, if we move forward, there's obviously, there was phase of a, a draft design, right? But then there's the, the real final design that we would get a lot of public input on. And the white pet committee would weigh in the board, have a chance to review. And we get, we, we always have public hearings on those things. All the projects, you know, public boards calls a public hearing on the design. Um, and, and I recognize that, you know, people in the neighborhood, this is a concern, it's a big change. Um, but I guess I look at it as it's gonna be changed for the better in terms of safety. Um, for people living there, people who are wanting to, you know, visit the school, use the facilities during the weekends or after school. It just creates more accessibility. So I guess then the question is, how do we proceed? So my understanding is we have the funding already that has been earmarked for this and that's what we, we kinda put everything on, on, on hold.
We have a purchase order already established. We're standing to go ahead and do full sets of drawings. Uh, we have, we've paid nothing to the state. Nice.
Uh, so, so this would be, yeah, to, to find, so we go to the next phase that would finalize the drawings, get everybody's input, and then we would go through the permitting process through DOT and then apply to lots of, to get the, the funding. Um, and that would take, I, I would guess, Rob, I don't, if Rob slides.
Well, there's gonna be more too, because we also have the bridge.
Yeah, we have the bridge.
So the testing bridge is gonna be involved in the web.
Yeah, so it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be a while. There's gonna be a lot of opportunity to weigh in and, and, but we need to get the designs.
But, but I'm questioning the need. I mean, I, I think we need to answer the fundamental question. Are we going to do this project and by what mechanism are we going to approve it? If, uh, it's a capital project.
Well, well, okay, it is, but it was actually in CIP as part of the study was in CIP. So I guess it was seen as endorsed like three years ago through that process?
Yes, sidewalk feasibility study.
The study was in CIP and approved. So you want, you want the project itself to then go through CIP.
I think it should go through this board.
Yeah.
I think it, I mean, it, it, we, we, we still have the authority to approve or not capital projects.
Well, we could go, the CIP committee's in session now. We could submit it initially through them, right? And then they come up with the, um, it's, there's no funding needed because it's gonna be a hundred percent funded construction wise by.
Just not affecting year one versus.
It's not changing their funding, it's just if they endorse it through the blessing of the project through their process and they can recommend to us the plan.
Then I think what I'd like to see is if it, if it's gonna go to the CIP, I'd like it to go with a vote from this board. Because I.
Endorsing it being from us?
So you don't have to vote on this?
I would like an opportunity to vote on this because I, I don't think this project should move forward. I'm not gonna support it. Um, and, uh, I, I.
And you don't wanna vote against CIP?
I think just letting it go, well, I don't have, why I don't.
Yeah, exactly. And I understand what you're saying. You'd rather.
Forced with voting against the entire budget, um, over this.
So, so at the next meeting, we could take a vote to recommend that the project gets, uh, implement or inserted into the CIP. And then we send it to CIP.
And I, and I would request respectfully that, we've heard a lot of advocacy and, and I applaud the, the BIPED Commission for advocating for what its charges. I think you're doing absolutely the right thing. Uh, the, uh, it's just that on this particular project, I'm, I'm not in alignment with you. Um, I'd like to see the testimony and the public comment that is not in support of this, you know?
Well, we've had that meeting.
But, but the package that we've got in our thing is only advocacy.
No, it's answering questions that was laid. Those, I was asked to bring back data and support that sidewalks make things.
The Board of Ed letter is an unsolicited letter of advocacy for that.
Well, yeah, but you, I was asked at the meeting, who wants this? And I said, well, the Board of Ed wants it, the BIPED Commission wants it. So I'm, I was just supplementing the conversation we have. That's all.
So that's fine. And, and I'm not.
And we can take the, we can take the public comment. I mean, first of all, the, we'll have a public meeting, right? Uh, we, if we do a vote, right, at our next meeting, so they can come and do, and then we can also take the public comment from the meeting that we had before, which we have in the minutes, right? So we could attach that as part of the packet. So there'll be an opportunity for people.
On both sides, okay?
Yeah, yeah, I think, no, I, I, I understand that. Yeah, I mean, I think that, um, the, so we can include all that at our next meeting.
Okay.
Um, and then what we'll do is then have another conversation and then it'll be, an action will be to recommend that would be what we'd be voting on, that this get put into the CIP.
With no funding.
With no funding, right. So, um, okay, all right, we'll do that. And then, um, and then obviously this will be, I'm sure everybody will know all about this now on Facebook. So we'll get the people who are supportive of the project, we'll get people who are not supportive. And, and I think, um, you know, it'll be a good conversation for us. So we'll plan on having this just because of the timing. I think we're gonna have to do this at our next meeting, which is the.
Oh, next week, the way we're going.
Not before Thanksgiving, I don't think.
Actually, our next meeting is not until.
Probably after Thanksgiving, for the beginning of December.
The December ninth, okay. Well, that's fine. And then, um, or the tenth, excuse me. Right?
Tenth of November. Hand, hand, confirmation.
Is it the sixteenth?
No, we can take this off one.
Okay, well, all right, we'll figure it out. So, I'm sorry. All right, well, thank you very much. Good discussion. Thank you. Um, and thank you for coming, you know, both people in the neighborhood as well as advocates for the white pet, to be continued. Um, so we will move on to item number fourteen, discuss and take action to amend the charter of the Ad hoc Madison 200 America 250 Steering Committee.
Ooh.
Excellent. Okay, we were just clarifying that, um, putting in some more formal liaisons. Cause I know a lot of groups really wanted to participate in this or have some sort of representation. So we just kind of expanded the liaison roles on this. Um, and so that's the amendment that was put in the packet to the charge. So change what they're actually doing, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, and that was feedback, I think, from the interviews.
Yep, yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number fifteen, discuss and take action to appoint Roz Kama as the Chair of the Ad, um, Madison 200 America 250 Steering Committee.
So, ooh.
Okay, any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, excited, and we'll get that rolling starting next month.
Yes.
Um, item number sixteen. Um, discuss and take action to improve policy regarding public participation during town board and commission meetings. I get a, oh, sure enough.
Okay.
Okay, great. So, um, this is a follow-up to a meeting we had ways back about just trying to provide, uh, more general guidelines. So the public understands kind of the rules of the road when we have a public meeting. Um, and that we have something more formal. I know other board and commission chairs have asked me about this cause some are struggling a little bit at times when they have a more contentious topic up on their agenda that they want some sort of policy to follow and guidelines. So this is a draft that was kind of pulled together from different examples. These are all over the state. Many towns have these policies. Um, and, um, I pulled a draft together, I think, made a few amendments this time, and then I also sent out to the board, cause I know there's a lot of discussion on social media about this. I think, wanna highlight again, this is not to shut down public comment. This is not to, uh, restrict people's voices. This is just trying to create a little bit more structure to it and, and, and rules that we can all follow during the public comment period. I would say ninety percent of the time, we just kinda do our thing. We're not super rigid. I think when we have the public come and we always let people speak longer than two minutes and we often let people speak multiple times, but when you have a big issue and you have, you know, fifty, a hundred people show up, you have to have some structure to it and you have to have some rules. Um, and so this is trying to just codify those rules and make sure that everybody's aware of what they are.
And many of these rules, by the way, too, Peggy, are rules that we've been doing for years.
Yeah.
So we're just, we're just putting them down on paper.
Exactly. It, it is not anything different. So I sent it out to the board this afternoon and my suggestion had been, item four is really what our board decides. Like the first two sections are more just general procedures. It's like a policy that we kinda have on the website. But then item four is really what we want for our meetings and other boards and commissions might wanna have different sets of rules. For example, planning a zoning, they're regulated differently. So they might have to have different kind of rules of engagement for their meetings. So I thought, let's have a very simple list for our board that just highlights the key points. So that's why I took a shot at kind of making it less like legalese and sounding like this, you know, we're wagging a finger at people and saying, you, thou shalt not. We're really just saying, here, you know, keep it to two minutes, you know, keep it simple.
Be nice.
So that's what this is. This is kind of our, uh, our, you know, kind of what we would like for people. And then we would just attach to, to every meeting agenda. Um, I know Bruce had spent some time and, and did some more research. So, you know, we could do a round of edits again. I feel like we all feel like this needs more work. I think from some of the public feedback, who clearly some people think misinterpreted what our purpose was here. And then I know you have some opinions of how you'd like to see it written. Would we rather just all kind of email some changes and have a new revision and then we can kind of vote on it? Or do you wanna hash it out?
Cause I think you're starting to do that today.
Yeah, yeah, we're kinda, you know, just making suggestions, um, about how it would work. And you came up with some other good examples too, so.
Yeah, so I mean, we could even, I mean, I'd be happy to, we could, the two of us could talk because I have done a bunch of research. You've done a bunch of research, um, and we could maybe put something together that, that the rest of the board could.
Could look at, right.
Yeah, rather than giving everybody a blank sheet of paper and saying, what do you think?
Yeah, yeah.
But I think it, it bears repeating, um, and then repeating again. Um, what, what Peggy has said is, um, we are committed to public comment. Um, what I've seen over the last ten or so years is with a fair amount of frequency, citizens will stand up, not understand what the public comment is, and then be disappointed at our seeming lack of response. Um, and, and so we're really working hard to set expectations about, um, how your voice is heard and what's gonna happen in this setting. A town meeting is different, a public hearing is different. Of course, emails to BOSS@MadisonCT.org, um, are different as well. Um, so we're, we're talking about, um, the opportunity for residents. Residents, that's an important distinguish, an, an important thing. Our, our constituency are the residents of Madison, so this is not for, for residents of Clinton or Guilford or anyone else to, to talk about what's on their mind. Um, and, uh, and for us to be able to hear that, so. And, and, and for the opportunity to get it on camera as well. So for some people, that's important. So we're not seeking to silence that.
Absolutely. No, I think we're violently like nod our heads, you know.
Oh, we've never, we've never done that. And we don't intend to do this. This is just adding a little structure. If we need it, where we have a lot of people wanting to speak, we gotta have some votes.
And in fact, it may not even be as helpful for our board. It may be helpful for boards down the road and boards that are already, you know, in process. We've got sixty boards and commissions.
And then, and then we say that in the context of, this is a business meeting.
Right.
Um, we're conducting the business of the town here. So the meeting can't get derailed into something else. And so we need those guardrails in place to, to try to keep that.
Yeah, very well said. The other thing that Bruce and I talked about today, which I, I didn't understand a lot, and some of this is legalese, so forgive me. But we've talked about the state statute today and I just wrote down that, uh, cause it did come up and this was a contentious topic on, on social media, relative to personnel issues are not a matter of public record. And so I think that's, you know, something as we're looking at this next draft that, you know, we need to make sure that we're thinking about. And there's, I think I put to, back to a note to you guys, just the alternative, you know, forums that we need to educate the public on leveraging, whether it be human resources, whether it be BOSS@MadisonCT.org, whether it be Peggy's office, whether that be the Ethics Commission. There's a lot of options, I think, that are available that my guess is most people don't know about, so.
Right. And when we look at other towns that have policies, they're in agreement. This is not the forum for somebody to air a personal grievance about, um, a member of town staff. I suppose we're probably fair game at any moment.
Goes with the paycheck.
That's different. But, um, with regards to staff, this is not the forum for that. There, there are ways to, to air those grievances properly.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I think, um, you know, it's, it's, uh, most of our boards and commissions are volunteer, well, you're volunteers, but you're elected. So once you go in on the ballot, it's a different.
We asked, we asked for this one.
Elected volunteer.
A lot of them are just, you know, people stepping up. They're interested in bicycle pedestrian activity or they're interested, the Shellfish Commissioner, you know, it's so, you know, if, if there's an issue with that individual on a commission, I feel like, you know, that's, we need to be respectful about that and really handle that, I think, in a different way than if it is a different point, you know, uh, about conduct or something. And, uh, and we do have channels for that. Cause you might disagree with the decision, but it's not the person, it's the decision you can talk about, right? I was disappointed that this.
Or the act share or the task or the project, right?
Versus, it, you know, uh, attaching it to an individual, that's all. So of course this is the forum where you're disappointed with the decision the board made or an action taken by the town staff because you, they didn't approve something. That's a conversation, but to, you know, to make it more about the person, that's when we're getting into a territory that this would be inappropriate for.
Peggy Lyons, I'm disappointed that we're not out by eight thirty.
We can be, so it sounds like we'll go through another round of this. Um, and, you know, and try to make it a little more clear what our objectives are. And then Bruce and I will commit to working to another draft for this, okay?
Nice.
All right, good. Um, and then I think then, so that will be moved on to, so I read the motion, we need to, we're just gonna table. The motion to table number sixteen.
So, ooh, second.
All right. Um, discuss and take action to improve the twenty twenty-five Board of Selecting Meeting Schedule.
So, ooh.
Second. Okay. Has everybody looked at this closely?
Oh, yeah, like, I've got my schedule set already.
I know. So the, the issue that I always have is CCM and sometimes these Tuesday meetings. But I don't have to go to all of them, but I need, there's an important one. So right now it looks like it won't be a problem. But I'll give you a forewarning that there might be one where I might request we change the meeting date via CCM. Cause I like, the in-person ones are pretty important. We're putting a legislative agenda together. Um, so that might come up or I might request a change, okay? Um, so with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm number seventeen, a discuss and take action to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget workshop schedule.
Ooh.
Second. Okay, um, the one thing to note on this is the referendum is a week earlier. And that was something that was allowed to the new town charter because usually we were one of the latest towns in the state to approve our budget. Um, so we were able to shift it up, I think, a week. Uh, the date is now, you've got it in front of you, May, uh, May sixth, Tuesday, May sixth. So that's a week, uh, earlier than we normally do. It makes it like a lot easier for the tax office and everything else. Or if the budget gets voted down, it gives us a little more wiggle room to get another referendum scheduled before tax bills go out. So, um, so I just wanna highlight that. Any other questions about the schedule? So, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. All right. Uh, moving on to item number nineteen, citizen comments. So, uh, please, if you have any comments you'd like to make, please stand up, raise your hand, state your name and address.
We had two raised, it looks like.
So I'll do in the room first, cause I know we have some residents here, please.
Hi, I'm Kristen Garnett. I'm two-two-four Green Hill Road. I'm the house at the corner of, um, Muggertown and Green Hill on the south side. Um, so I'm not shocked tonight by, you know, your desire to move forward with the sidewalk project. I appreciate any efforts, if it does go through, to help, um, mitigate the demands on us as homeowners. Uh, what I am surprised about though is I didn't see any, um, on the list of town engineering projects or any of your discussion. Nothing is, nothing seems to be on the table right now regarding vehicular safety. We, you, you all mentioned, we all know how the rates of speed lack odd, odd controls at intersections. That school is opening in ten months. You have ten months if you're gonna be making any changes. I, I don't see anyone or hear anyone planning. Um, you're just focused right now, it seems, on the sidewalk. But I think you've gotta do that in conjunction with looking at these two intersections. Like you mentioned, Green Hill and Warfus, where there's only a two-way out of the, you know, and then, uh, Green Hill and Muggertown, there's no way to turn. Like, I would think you would be looking at putting in turning leaves.
Or flashers, those flashers.
Flashers, something. You're, you're gonna have a terrible time getting people across that oncoming traffic. And I haven't heard a single word about what you need to plan for that, only ten months away. So that's my comment. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Yep.
My name's Karen Rankin. I live at Twenty-One Little Hall, but my mother-in-law lives at Eight Warfus, which is the right house on the corner. Um, we just spent the last two weekends repairing her fence. We put in a police report back in October. Someone in the middle of the night crashed through her fence and took out over twenty-eight, eight, I believe, the fencing. It was four sections. It was over three hundred dollars of wood. Um, that was just one incident since the last meeting that we've had here. There was. There was a granite mailbox post that broke in half from another driver. So we have two motor vehicle accidents that have now taken place. The car was not drivable, the one that hit my mother-in-law's fence. It actually was abandoned right at the, I believe, was that your building?
My parking lot.
They just took the plates off and not the car, because it was completely destroyed. So for a car to make that much damage on someone's personal property, over fifteen feet into someone's personal property, there's a problem with that corner. And I do believe that there were two traffic studies that were, that were completed this past year that indicated, the first one indicated a traffic light should have been installed with the amount of traffic being possibly issued there or estimated for that corner. Then when the driveway got further bumped down to Muggertown Road, it was now strongly encouraged that a third stop sign be installed to slow down traffic. But yet, there's been no talk of it. So we all know that this is a dangerous corner.
Yeah, so I think just one comment is maybe what we will do is also talk about other improvements that are being considered. Because I know the chief has been focused on this. I just don't know what plans are in place or action items.
And the police commissioners, I'm sure.
Well, we talked about projects, capital projects that are millions of dollars versus maybe some changes to curving or signage or whatever. But we'll have that addressed at the next meeting.
I mean, even with a sidewalk there, it's still not going to be a safe, safe area to walk through. Because this is occurring beyond where the sidewalk would be. This is personal property being destroyed on a routine basis now. Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
I'm Phil Jansen, two seventy two Green Hill Road. And I am concerned about maintenance on the sidewalks, because I'm gonna have many hundreds of feet of sidewalks. And with that new water main, I don't have a lot of confidence that it's gonna be designed aesthetically pleasing, because I'm not happy with the water main. And the other thing is with the, with the sidewalk, is that for pedestrian or bicycles? Because as I understand, most sidewalks are just, you know, pedestrian sidewalks. And it really should be widened out. It should have been widened out, you know, for a bike lane or something there. We definitely need to widen that street. But anyway, that's my thoughts.
Thanks. Yep, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeff Carnet, two twenty four Green Hill. I live in the same house as my wife. At least, at least today. We've lived there twenty seven years. I can tell you, I've heard crashes in front of my house, dozens and dozens and dozens of times. It's one of the, I'm most unsafe roads in the town. There's no speed ordinance there. People flying by. And to Karen's point, I've seen cars hit and take out trees, come over and take out, we're gonna take out that fire hydrant. Nope, I'm sure in some short fashion. But just put a little curb in or sidewalks, not gonna stop any car from coming through that. So it's not gonna make it any safer for anybody. So just as an F Y I, for someone who's lived there for twenty seven years. It's a very unsafe road. Putting in sidewalks is not gonna be getting more safe for any pedestrians.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I feel, I need to stand up. My name's John Bean. One oh four Love Lane. I know I made a letter for the board, but I'd like to make one for myself. So putting in sidewalks will make it safer. So about seventy percent of pedestrian fatalities occur in areas without sidewalks. That's from the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. The likelihood of a pedestrian being hit by a car with no sidewalks is three times greater than the likelihood of a crash per mile with a sidewalk. That's from the National Institute of Health. I unfortunately have been hit by a vehicle. It's not fun. I'm lucky to be alive. My son is seven. He loves to walk, run, ride his bike. This is where three quarters of the town's children will be. This is a no-brainer. We need a sidewalk there. So, thank you.
Sorry.
Ryan O'Connor, twenty three Amber Trail. Just wanted to, you know, second that, that I fully support sidewalk in that area, because I think it is, and will be even higher traffic once the sidewalks are in. There's proof that sidewalks improve safety.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Doras. I'm here for a different reason. I'm on forty nine Hunter's Trail. I've been there forty six years. I had five children. Four of them went to Jeffrey. All five of them went to the high school. Two of them been hit on their bicycles, because I live between seventy nine and Cox Road, right where it comes out at the farm, okay? Nobody addressed the speeding. People come down Cox Road at a hundred miles an hour. A guy took out my mailbox, ended in the woods upside down one time while I was there. But there'd been a lot of speeding. All the buses passed through that little short stretch of Hunter's Trail. Okay? Kids who are on the track team will not run on a sidewalk. They run on the street. I don't care how much you do. I had kids on the cross-country and on the running team, and they will not do it. I had my kids walk to school. I'm less than three quarters of a mile from Jeffrey. They were required to take the bus, but they said it takes too long to go home. They would walk home. Because going to school, I was the last stop almost. But coming home, I mean, I was, the last stop dropped off. The kids wouldn't walk. I mean, wouldn't take the bus. They'd walk home. And no one's addressed, like anybody said, I'm not against either one. Bruce has got a great idea about what it is and why he doesn't like it. Those who think sidewalks are benefit, sidewalks are a benefit for the people who use them. If you don't use a sidewalk, what good is it? Nobody can ride on a sidewalk, because if you change the rule to ride on a sidewalk on your bicycle around the high school, you should be able to ride your bicycle through the center of town on a sidewalk. You can't have two rules. So, you know, the bike, so you need a space for a bike lane. You need a space for a sidewalk. There's just not a space in those, I mean, I've lived here forty five years. There's not enough space unless you take eminent domain, you take somebody's property and take it away. And on this standpoint here, he's got so much land that he's gonna lose. He doesn't want the sidewalk away. And I'm not favored one way or the other. I'm just trying to give you something to think about, because I've been there forty five years and recognize what the situation's like.
Thanks. Thank you for your comment. I think we have a few hands raised online. Oh, Art, sorry.
Art Simons, sixty five Barton Drive. I'm interested in bicentennial commission. And those of us who didn't get selected have been notified very graciously. That was nice. But I'd like to know who was selected and when you will publicly be announcing that. I think you announced the chairman.
It's two, yes, two people. It's.
Yeah, we voted on it last meeting, I think.
Bicentennial? We just did it.
No, you voted in the chair. We voted in the chair. The last meeting, we appointed the public members. And then there's a list of members that were selected by their committees to be on it. So we can, I think we have a list in our packet, but we'll post it, who's, who's been appointed.
Okay, will be online.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be on the website. And, and yeah, there was two public members. And then there was a list of, of like, commissions, like E D C or the library or whatever organizations that selected one of their members to be on it.
Sorry, the two, the two public members were Ross Kama and Ryan DuKess.
Good. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other? Okay, hands raised online, if that's okay. I see Fran has been up here for a while. So was he? You have two, Fran. Okay. Well, he was raised up and then I.
Fran, you still there?
Yes.
Go for it.
All right, Fran Brady again from one oh eight N S E Lane in North Madison. I wanted to say with regards to the sycamore tree, should the sidewalk project move forward and in lieu of a proper tree ordinance, where these kind of rules will be clear, and in light of the fact that the black walnut was cut down on the whim of a contractor, could you please incorporate a bond requirement, whatever the right contractual agreement would be, with the construction company that covers the possibility that due to their heavy equipment, equipment, and maybe due to their rush to do things quickly around that tree, that they should, that should the tree die within one or two years, again, I don't know how long you can hold somebody on a bond, that the construction company loses a fifty thousand dollar bond. Should it survive, they get the money back. I ask this because I, standard practice, which I had emailed to you in April, is to protect the large tree up to the drip line. The drip line for this tree is twenty, is a twenty-five yard, yeah, I said twenty-five yard radius. The diagram you showed today and back in April does not account for that. So there's gonna be heavy equipment and drill and digging and such within, under the drip line. And someone should be held accountable if that tree dies. And there is an easy way to do it. It's by having a bond. Thank you. And by the way, I agree with, I agree with Bruce, that I don't think this, that particular area needs a sidewalk. I think you can live without it. Maybe everywhere else, okay. But that, just don't put a sidewalk around the tree. Thanks.
Just that.
Thank you for your comment. Any, is there one more hand raised? Please state your name and address. T V D.
Hi, Terry Van Endolder, seventeen Bartlett Drive, pegging backing on the same subject of the sidewalk and along with Fran's comments, and also supporting those from Bruce and Jen and Al. It, there's no doubt that the street is a dangerous place to walk or ride a bike or even, obviously, even if you're driving a car or a bus. But putting a sidewalk in is not gonna protect those who are on the road and their bikes, or those who are on the road in their cars. And it may not even protect the kids if they end up, you know, stumbling onto the street. The only thing that's gonna protect them is to widen that road, and it seems like it's not really possible to do that. The sycamore has come up many times, and rightfully so. That's an amazing, majestic, notable tree. Even per the state, it is a notable tree. But there are also very large, majestic, mature evergreens that are at the corner of Green Hill Road in Warpus, that terrible triangle that everyone refers to. And those will be taken down if you do put in a sidewalk on the south side of that road. Interestingly enough, there are many city studies which prove that trees create traffic calming, traffic calming. So when you remove trees, you are creating the exact opposite, a larger, more open space with which vehicles will travel at a faster rate. So as Bruce mentioned, the really, if you want to connect pedestrian and cycle traffic between the schools, that makes sense. But do it with a trail over the wetlands and a bridge. That's the only way to protect those children. As Jen pointed out, parents and the Board of Ed are not going to let the kids go from one school to another. They're gonna bust them. So if you're gonna bust them, then all these other arguments don't hold water. What you probably need to do, the full width of Green Hill, is to perhaps put in more selectively or strategically placed stop signs. But in addition to that, consider rumble strips and speed bumps. That will help the safety on that road. But a sidewalk's not gonna do it. Sidewalks are great if they're in the right area, but it's not gonna serve the purpose for which I think you're, you're looking to do.
Okay, thank you for your comments. That is concluding the public, oh, sorry.
I just have one more.
Yeah, sure.
Charles Leiberg, thirty seven Kimberly in Madison. And I've commuted Green Hill down to Warpus to the industrial park for three decades. I've never seen an accident. I'm sure there aren't plenty of accidents outside the time of the traveling. I don't see many pedestrians. I see a few runners. There's a sidewalk right in front of Olson. But it seems to be used in the evening mostly for people taking a leisure walk. If we think it's important to get people from the schools to the new elementary school, as Bruce suggested, it's probably an alternate route over the wetlands directly. And I did a little map and I looked at it, and it's four hundred and fifty feet between Hand High and Net River Elementary. Four fifty. The route that's proposed by Sandec is like three thousand feet. You might get administration and teachers walking between schools. It's four hundred and fifty feet. Three thousand feet? I don't think so. It's cold, it's wet, and not gonna do it. So I think the direct route over the wetlands with a little bridge, like we do at Hammond Asset, over the wetlands, inexpensive, not in public, you don't see it. You're not gonna have a bridge of one Green Hill going over the Net River. It's been proposed to be kind of a wooden trestle bridge, which would be pretty outstanding and kind of a nice old thing. So a straight route might be the best way to do it, least expensive and the safest for everyone as well, avoiding more traffic. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other? Yes, please.
Okay, sorry, just, just got a Joseph, one twenty nine Green Hill. I bike my children to Jeffrey occasionally, and it can be scary. But it can also definitely be safer when there's sidewalks. Not the bicycles would be on the sidewalks, but people that are walking or then not driving. And so then that would reduce not only air pollution, but make it safer in the streets. There's currently a Jeffrey field trip that walks from Jeffrey School to Bauer Park. So a field trip to have the trail might not be so far out there, especially if there's a safe route to do so. There was talk in the June meeting, I believe, about a survey going out to the P T Os, to the schools that might be helpful to also see if parents would utilize, how many parents would utilize these sidewalks. And yes, I'm sure the heat maps are from the high school runners, who should also be protected. A review of the ordinance, ordinance to have the homeowners clear the sidewalks does seem also like a no-brainer, especially since a couple of properties will have a great deal of the sidewalk. And one argument that in the previous meeting was that there's no foot traffic, which, again, we know that's not exactly true. But how, how many more people would utilize those sidewalks if they were available? And it's known that sidewalks bring communities together, reduce air pollution and improve public health. They could also increase the homeowner's value of the property fifteen percent, according to the survey.
Okay, thank you very much. Yep, thank you for your comments. Okay, so last call for public comments. No? Okay, I guess with that, then, you're in no objection? This meeting is adjourned. All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody.